Dear God, we just thank you for the privilege of being able to assemble the freedom and have a meeting like this. And just appreciate the privilege that we have to serve and to serve our community and to serve you. And we just ask that this will continue. And we ask that each one of us here today, tonight, the blessings that we have, and they'll may help us all to find a way to pass these blessings along to someone that we meet along the road. That's this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this, okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting against having board commissioners to order for November 19th, 2018. At this time, there's no minutes to approve because we do that on the first of December. We have the agenda in front of us. I would like to make one addition to new business number nine, a recognition.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add number nine.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made and promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and an Ice delegations?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there any unaniced delegations?
Yes, I have a letter that was sent by Anthony Felton, Way to Grove, York. First of all, I'd like to take the time to thank Mr. Billy Felton for his great service for our community here in Gates County. I wish you the very best. Of course, I can't forget to thank the other commissioners for their great services as well. I'm not very good at talking in public like the other pros in here, so I'll let my type interject and do it for me. Even a shot of Mountain Dew would help. I'd like to thank my mom, dad, and brother for helping posting and collecting the candidates signed during the election season. Thank you for watching out for traffic and barking dogs. I would also like to thank my brother for helping at the polls, as well as even though the weather had some pickups at times. Luckily, we didn't have to have a referee either. It feels great to get out and help the candidates. Congratulations to the candidates also. Thank you.
Okay, I beg it. Can we pass that back to Bill?
Yes.
Certainly, thank you.
Well written.
Yes.
Well written, well served.
Okay, there is no administrative reports this evening because, once again, this is our second meeting of the month. And no public hearings, no old business. So we've moved to number eight, new business. We have for us some personnel board recommendations. County manager, would you like to go with us?
There are two. The first is an approval of an 8 percent salary increase for Matt Lowes with Soil and Water upon completion of certification. And the second is to reclassify David Mansfield and J.D. Harold to utility system operators at a grade 60 and a salary of $26,771 to be retroactive to July 1st of 2018.
Okay, as you have before you, the minutes of the Personnel Board, the discussions that were held at that typical point in time concerning these two, well, three employees are there. This comes as a recommendation from the Personnel Board. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept these recommendations from Personnel Committee and Personnel Board. I'd also like to add that, given I have received several calls as pertaining to Matt Low and the fact that he should be recognized with monetary means.
Okay, so you made a motion to, for both of these recommendations to be approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and promptly seconded. Is any further discussion concerning those two items? The one, the second one, those individuals, you know, have been switched from customer service to, back to water department. Those titles should have been switched at that time. So that's why that one is retroactive. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So those have been approved. Okay, we have for us a resolution in support of JCPC allocation expansion. Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, and then we're going to go back to the bond?
Oh, well, yes.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to check, all right. For the resolution in support of Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which I probably will say JCPC from here on out, is to request the legislature to increase funding for this committee. There has not been an increase in state funding in nine years. And currently, they have, we have two programs and a restitution program, is Genesis and Alternatives for Youth. They completed services to 69 children in fiscal year 18 with an average cost of $1,160 per child with over 4,200 hours of service provided. And over the past seven years, they've served over 500 children. Effective December 1st of 2019, the legislature has enacted that the juvenile ages now include 16- and 17-year-olds. At this time, they do not include 16- and 17-year-olds. But on December 1st of 2019, 16- and 17-year-olds will again be considered juveniles for the judicial system in North Carolina. So JCPC is requesting that the General Assembly allocate more funds in order for the county programs to be better suited to provide services for the youth, not only for the 16- and 17-year-olds, but any other youth that are diverted into the JCPC funded programs.
Sorry, I didn't realize that they had brought back the children and that now.
Yes.
That's a tremendous number. Okay, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution in support of Juvenile Crime Prevention Council allocation expansion.
A motion's been made, is do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to. Do we have any figures as pertaining to how many in Gates County, how many juveniles in Gates County serve?
For this past, currently?
For this past year.
For the past year, there were, I can't remember if it was eight or nine that were referred to juvenile. However, only two of them had to have community service hours. The others were diverted to the Genesis program and Alternatives for Youth. And we have been fortunate that we have not had to take, send anyone to any of the other out-of-county programs, such as the Everett Youth Camp, for example.
Do you think the age limit rising is going to affect any, or do we know anything?
I don't know, that wasn't fully discussed last time. They do anticipate there fitting a change in the numbers. However, Nancy Hodges, who is the outgoing area consultant for the Department of Public Safety, she said that Gates County has always been unique in that they have always tried to handle all their juvenile instances differently than other counties. They try to intervene before it gets to the core system. So that is one reason we didn't have such a low number.
Very well. I'd like to add too, I believe that trillions and the increase of trillions involved with crisis negotiations and what have might also have an impact.
Right, and hopefully with trillions at the meeting. And it may have actually been at the meeting, I had an overseas foundation, Hope was also there. And she was talking about how the school system was approved for a guidance counselor, or excuse me, not a guidance counselor, a therapist who worked with students, but they'd not be able to find a clinical psychologist. So she said that could play a role also with this program in the future.
And hopefully that they can find one, because the more intervention you have, the earlier stage generally works better.
Correct.
The Board gets to that.
And then that, just at adequate a time of increase of funds, you don't have anything more specific than that?
No, because they will take any amount, there has not been any sort of increase. And that was the general discussion, not just here, but from what Nancy said at other counties as well. No one wanted to throw a number out there. And in fact, she said that they had, someone in another county had actually talked to some of their legislators. And they said, "Well, we thought we approved an additional X million." And they said, "No, that wasn't in the final vote, but, you know, that was passed. It was in one of the suggested recommended budgets, but they did not pass it."
Yeah, you know, at the last minute, they threw things in, take things high, throw it fast.
Now, how about the date there? Is that correct, December 1st, 2019?
That's not the one that I have in the package that says November, I mean, the 19th of December. So Melissa has the correct one.
I'm looking at the fourth where it is.
Yes, that is correct. That's when the juveniles who are ages 16 and 17 become juveniles under the Department of Public Safety.
Okay.
So it's like twelve months.
Yes.
And Ellen's position is not replacing Nancy?
Yes, Ella Bunch will now be the new area consultant. Nancy Hodges is now going to be, I forget what region it's actually called, but it will include everything south of Martin.
So she's going to have that part, Nancy's position's not going to?
Yes.
I'll wish to post.
Yes, she's going to take over everything that Nancy currently has and wants to.
Any further discussion, questions? Certainly, we need to see if the General Assembly will give us some more support. It would be probably save money in the long run, if they would do it intervention earlier until they get into the legal system.
That has been shown to be true. And I was always looking to see, but it's not on. Okay, in fiscal year 17, the cost for the child in youth development center was $139,434.
What league of town?
For, it just said the average cost.
$139.
Thousand.
Oh, yeah, I got the thousand.
And we receive a lot, we receive quite $62,000 for a county.
That would cover about half a child.
Could make it half.
Okay, is that we repair to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Now, we'll go back to number six, the approval of a bond for the sheriff. We had talked about this in our previous meeting. General statutes are pretty clear about the mind of the bond has to be. As you see here, the mind of the bond shall be determined by the Board of County Commissioners, but shall not exceed $25,000. Which I thought was kind of low, but it's low.
We did too.
I know, we all thought it was mine. We were certainly using that number.
In comparison to our families.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Well, certainly make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we do have a bond and follow the general statute in their recommendation of at least $25,000.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded for a bond for the sheriff in that law of protocol this way. And I knew sheriff, you know, December the third. And we have court that day here.
Yes.
So the judge will be here.
Well, the judge, parents will come and they heard this word, and then they can act all the days of this world.
And our commissioners may even be next.
We'll be in the pack for decision calls.
And Madam Chairman, I'd like to also commend and thank our clerk, Ms. Long, who did some research on that. But we had a discussion about the bond, and I could not recall if it was $50,075, but I had that in my mind for, not the previous sheriff, but the one prior to that. And I'm sure she did some research in that, but I could not find anything. But I had some notes that was around $50,075.
Okay, thank you.
That's a technical.
Just enough to come by.
Okay, let's vote on that bond. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So you'll be promptly bonded as of December the third.
Thank you, talk to somebody, I'll be promptly.
So.
We don't want to.
I'll say, man, I'll tell you what to do tomorrow. Who do you go see?
Okay, we have a pleasure of minutes.
This is to reallocate funds within the Commissioners line. The dues and subscriptions line is over expended by $1,925. We wish to take $1,000 for hospitalization and $925 advertising to move to the dues and subscriptions line.
Okay, what is the pleasure?
This one, Madam Chairman, I'd like a recommendation to accept budget provision number 26, as pertaining.
Okay, a motion's been made and promptly seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
It's $1,925. And dues and subscriptions comes up every year. So we budgeted.
I misallocated one of the, I misread one of the figures. So that was on me whenever I did it. And when the bill came in, I said, hmm, I need to write down the right amount. So that's why we have to allocate it.
Okay.
Well, we all, listen, we all went six. And, okay. No comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, number nine, recognition. At this time, you know, this is kind of a bittersweet moment for us. We're losing one of our colleagues. He chose not to run. He has been a member, Billy Felton, has been a member of the Board of Commissioners from 2013 to 2018, I believe, five years. And he is truly a public servant, active in his community with the Hall of Religion Club, your fire department, your Baptist church, and involved in many all activities surrounding the county. Certainly well-known in the county for his job as surveyor. He has been hired by a lot of citizens, and he brought that expertise to the Board. He knows the county well, and about land and plots and all that. And that expertise is not something that I was, that the rest of us were not well-versed in. Billy is a man of few words, but when he spoke, we all listened. And, you know, sometimes that is the best. Sometimes, some of us might talk too much. But we'll certainly miss him. We'll lose that wealth of knowledge that he has of county and its citizens, and that's going to be hard to replace. We're losing a friend as well. Our Board, we work well together. We do not always agree with each other, but we agree to disagree with stability. And so we are sad to see him. But I can understand Billy wanting to go on to all things, to travel, to enjoy the grandchildren. Three months after coming to the Board of Commissioners, he had a heart attack. And this summer, he had another heart attack. So maybe it is a good time to get out while you can, get, enjoy life. And I hope that that doesn't mean that this is a stressful job.
He was fine until he became Commissioner.
He was fine until he became Commissioner. So I'm not sure. You might want to consider that when you think about being a Commissioner. But Billy, we will certainly miss you. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, if they have comments?
Yes, ma'am, he's been a very dear friend of mine and a colleague that I've leaned on many times and watched the decisions he's made and felt weighed by the thoughts that have been going through his mind as he either looked at finances pretty close and did so. But I too watched and listened to, as he said on Personnel Board, some of the things he brought to us. But we've been friends a long time. I hope I've had a friend of his on how he feels about me. But I have his, and we've known each other a long time, from his football-playing days right on. So I certainly miss him and sad him. And I certainly do appreciate the knowledge that he's brought to us. So thank you.
Well, I have his phone number, so we haven't lost that wealth of information. And I'm sure there will be times, seriously, Billy, when one of us may call you and ask your opinion on something. I think if you look back at some of the videos of our meetings, you'll see several times where Billy would start a sentence, "Well, let me remind you," and he would remind us of something that we did prior. And he would also remind us of something that we said prior, or something that we, some dollars that we spent. So I agree and concur that the information, the source that you brought to the Board has been very helpful. And if you also look at some of those minute meetings and videos, you'll see that when it was very clear that we were in Billy's territory of knowledge and resource, I would lean up and say, "Commissioner Felton, what have you got to say?" So I recognized that early on. And Billy's a good friend. He's been a great colleague. He's been a great county commissioner. And thank you, Billy. Glad you've been here with us, and we hope to see you in the audience from time to time.
Probably will.
Okay.
And I believe we have justice. Chairman, it's right down the order. I might stand and up, Billy. This is, says presented to Billy Felton in recognition of five years of dedicated service to Gates County, Gates County Board of Commissioners, September 6th, 2013 to December 3rd, 2018. And this is a pencil made out with wood. We thought you would appreciate that. Hand carved, so thank you. I think I'll get a picture. So let us, I'll get a picture with you, Billy.
Listen, you can't take it. But you want her to take it.
I can take it.
We can get somebody.
Well, you do.
Let's get in front of the table so we don't have these chairs.
We all need to take one first.
You've been sitting beside him all this time. Why don't you stand beside him?
You want me to go down?
How's my hair look, buddy?
Oh, we got to get this. Come on, we got to get this.
Where's your position?
I said.
Well, listen, you want to get beside Billy.
Yeah. Yeah, you get beside Billy.
We can slip back a little bit.
And the old lady, I thank you for them kind words. And it has been an interesting five years. It's not always been smooth and running like it should be, but it's been interesting five years. And it is a privilege to be able to serve. And I see Brenda has come in, and what I hear her say quite often. She'll, somebody will ask her what she does, she says, "I serve others." And that's the whole thing. Thank you.
Brenda, do you have a few words for us?
Less stress, I hope.
Okay, I would like to, at this time, I think we have finished the new business. We do have comments. Do we have any citizens' comments?
However, there were a few who came in after the meeting started, so they may not have had a chance to sign up.
Did anybody not sign up?
You know, they have the comments at the end.
This is the end of the meeting.
This is the end. These are usually the ones we don't sign up, but I came in here to speak.
Okay. We have missed you, Mr. Rhyther.
And I could not imagine that.
What'd you say?
And I said, "I could not imagine that."
Well, I got, I had four points I wanted to bring up, and they're not necessarily in the order that of importance. But the preference of what I'm going to say is that we have, I had a principal in high school. One of our principals in high school, when I was three years in high school, C.C.'s White, Calvin Coolidge White. I don't know, she was in the Sunbury at that time.
I wasn't at Sunbury, but I think.
Lord, yes, yeah. Well, I don't understand, I didn't believe in then, and I don't believe in now. But Mr. White was a graduate of Wake Forest, so he was smarter than everybody else in school. So, but he would, and when Sunbury was going to play, especially when Sunbury was going to play Gatesville basketball, we'd have a pep rally on Friday afternoon. Well, Mr. White would get this great philosophy that y'all all heard. It's not whether you win or lose, but how you play the game. That, to me, is the dumbest statement I've ever heard. And to make that statement every time, every Friday, a pep rally was the dumbest thing, and it's still dumb. Because winning is everything, but you got to know how to lose. But why are you going to go through life thinking about losing? And that was a dumbest statement. This might not make any sense, but I think it might in the end. The first person I wanted, I wanted to come get him that way, because some of the citizens thought that I had been so intimidated that I wouldn't come back. And so I thought maybe that I would show that Earl Rantry could not be intimidated, not at my age. So anyway, I came back. I don't know how to start this, or, but y'all have brought up all the things about Billy Felton. So I was going to tell us my part of Billy Felton. Billy, this is about like going to a funeral. You talk about this. Have you all been to a funeral, know about how bad somebody was that never played, then stand up and praise him? So don't take that personally. But I, you know, everybody loves you tonight, but I bet some kind of them disagreed. I don't know if they did or not. But I did want to share quickly with, you know, Billy, I don't know if I had anything in the world that would benefit from being on this board, but I did go to people's houses. See, the Democrat Executive Committee had to make a recommendation. And so I was concerned about who they may recommend. So there was some people in the former Democrat Executive Committee who didn't even know they were on their jack. I mean, maybe they did, they didn't. But Gatesville County Councilman, that was one group. And so I made a point to actually go and sit down in the living room with some of these people and politic Billy. Now, I don't know whether I heard him or not, but he won. So I don't want to take no credit for it, but I did, Billy, and you probably, you and I talked about that, but did go to sell houses and sit down and talk to these people because he was the most, well, I don't say the most, I will. Yeah, the most educated on the board, because he graduated in engineering, so, precious baby. But anyway, he was educated, and you would make a good Commissioner, and now you retired. And I told you all in here before, when Billy told me he wasn't going to run, I was mad at him. But he looks better now than he did six months ago. And he is going to feel better now than it's old, Bill, because he won't have that stress that he didn't even know he had. The other thing I wanted to discuss was, and like I said, no, I wanted to say Jack Owens. Jack, I knew you were going to win, but I was wanting to make sure that you won, but I didn't give you. Jack, I, I knew you were gonna win, but I was wanting to make sure that you won, but I didn't give you the money this time. Cause I figured you were gonna win. And I wanted to preface say that a little bit because I went back for forty years, actually, yeah, over forty, I went back for forty years, and I looked at the fact that it's hard to believe that about ninety percent of the candidates over forty years that I gave way to won. Now, you can look at it two ways, and one, and both of them are correct. I didn't give money to candidates that I knew were gonna lose. So that's one part of the ninety percent. However, there are candidates that we'll get the better of in a minute that you don't know about. But anyway, I thought that, uh, must have Bob Kirby in Choyne County, he won like fifty-seven percent of the vote in Choyne County. And you come, and I told him about this, and he said, well, just give me a few dollars. But anyway, so Jack, I, but Jack Owens, I wanted to put this on the record, the reason I brought Jack. Jack Owens is the only one, you commissioners, that ever publicly said something on camera nice about me. And when somebody does that, and I got a record of it, I would never forgive it. I don't forget, I, I got a preacher that stays on me all the time because of my philosophy, that I do not forget, and I do not forgive. But I also remember my friends, Jack. So that's about all I got to say about that, but, uh, you ought to get that. But Ray Campbell, this is something y'all don't know, and he's one of the names thing. But, uh, in June of two thousand seventeen, uh, June two thousand seventeen, I knew who Ray Campbell was, but I don't think that we have ever met face to face. And I went into Central Middle School on awards day, and here's this great big chested guy standing up there with his uniform on. He smiles at me. That was the first thing I noticed. He smiled at me, Ray. Second thing is, he shook my hand. And third, he knew my name. And this was two thousand, June seventeen, and I told some people, I said, "This guy might need to be sheriff. You need to look at him." But at that time, Ray, I had no idea what was gonna happen. And it was about, maybe less, somewhere about six months later, that I was at a social function outside of the county, and accident kind of came up in my mind, that Gates County needed a new sheriff. And I had never forgotten that, Ray, but I had bet you that day, and I said, "This might be the guy here that we can get behind him." So I, uh, don't have any clue that I did anything to help him. I did call him up, and we were talking, and if he needed any more money to buy signs. And he said that he looked at his budget and he could buy a few more, Billy. So he won, he was part of that ninety percent, and like I said, Billy, I don't have a clue whether I helped him or not. I may have even hurt him, but if I hurt him, I sure hurt him in a good way. Billy, I really enjoyed your mission, and I hope the board does well. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay.
And Earl, I wanted, I wanted to tell him, Jack, you be the only one here that's ever said anything nice about you. You are a good friend.
Jack's the only one I got on camera.
I could have sworn I might have said something nice about him at some point, but, uh, I had to go back and look at the tapes. Okay, at this time, we'll have commissioners, uh, comments, and I think I'll start tonight. Uh, a couple of things. Friday night, Gates County High School, second round of the playoffs. We are in playing. Yeah, Sycamore, Will Harrell's team, Coach Harrell's son, that ran away from Gates County High School.
Really?
Uh, so we, hopefully we have a big cry to root our bear and song. Uh, so if you have time and six, seven, eight dollars, go out to the game. Also, Christmas World Parade, December eighth, uh, Saturday afternoon, three P.M. We generally commandeer a pickup and throw candy. Uh, so we'll let Jack be in charge of providing us a pickup, or do we use the?
We've got county vehicles.
Okay.
I just need to know when, I mean, how many want to participate.
I will be there.
Then you can send me an email.
Okay. I, I'm planning. Okay, so that's two things that are coming up that we need to remember. Okay, this, of course, is Thanksgiving week, uh, week, and I think we should take a moment, all, at this time, to thank the many blessings that we have had in this country, and this state, and this county. Uh, so many times we take so much for granted, but we are able to, uh, vote for individuals or not vote for individuals. Uh, we are able to have public discourse, we have freedom of the press. Uh, so many things to be thankful for. Uh, it's not a perfect country, uh, but I wouldn't trade it for any other country in the world. So, uh, I hope all of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and it's the beginning of the holiday season. And, you know, it seems like people smile a little bit more during the, as we've approached Christmas. Uh, and let's keep those smiles all the year round.
Good to see everybody. Again, thank you, Billy, and, uh, I'll yield the rest of my thirty minutes to you.
Well, if Peter was here, I'd rather, but we, you are well-represented.
You won.
We do have elections back there, so we recognize him too.
I get second place. I get you a fourth, I mean.
Oh, yeah. You were a rock everywhere. As I said before, it's been a, been a privilege, uh, it's been interesting five years, and I have enjoyed most of it. And as Linda was speaking of the football team, if I'm, I think I'm correct, and the team, of course, and Will, the coach of the team that will be playing is about, is a part of Gates County. And if I'm correct, the team that he defeated last week had also Gates County tied.
It's Sikee Salhacks.
Didn't, didn't that coach come?
Yeah, oh, oh, gotcha. His name slips, I might not know.
Gates County football is, is well-represented in the playoffs in this, in this conference. And as Linda said, everybody come out, it's, you might not know us all in the world out there, we know, but we enjoy the game in there. Appreciate all of you coming out tonight, and the, I'm, I'm repeating, repeating Linda a lot. We do have many, many blessings and remember those blessings and pass them along to somebody else who can be far away.
Thank you. Uh, Billy, once again, I'd like to, to say how much, uh, I have learned by sitting beside you for these years. And, uh, and I know we have conversed and, and we've made decisions and, uh, with our colleagues, but it's been, uh, really wonderful being a colleague of yours, and I appreciate that so much. Uh, I do want to say one thing. I have an aunt who, uh, will be turning one hundred years of age, and I think most folks have an invitation to, to her next, uh, dance party. Uh, if, uh, if they are alcoholic beverages, I'm sure folks will be of age if they want to participate. And, uh, so we're real proud that she, uh, is, is turning one hundred, and it'll be here before we know it. Uh, again, I want to say, uh, God bless Gates County, God bless the citizens, uh, God bless the election that we've had. And, uh, and looking at the people, and I, I see two candidates that, uh, that are, they joined us, both the sheriff and, and the new commissioner. So, uh, thank y'all for being here, and thank you for having support of Gates County.
Okay.
Just one other thing. You know, we've got a missing chair here. I wanted to keep him in your prayers.
Uh, uh, that's something I've, um, learned to say too. Uh, certainly, we keep him in our prayers enough a day, and hopefully he'll be with us in December. The night town, and Nancy and I can get out for him. Uh, speaking of Miss Edith, um, Holmes, Freeman, Sylton, uh, we need to make sure we get the, we do something for, I mean, a proclamation for her.
That'd be in January.
Yeah. Well, we, we need to get the proclamation done, so we can head. Cause hers is right, first date, I mean, seven, six or seven.
She celebrates anywhere in between there.
She's a hell of a great sister.
That's her right when she's that age.
I just, I just wanted to say something to Ray about Miss Edith and the beverages. Uh, it may think about living to be pretty healthy at a hundred years old. The last time I saw her, uh, she was ninety, well, she still is ninety now, over at, uh, Will Harrell's. And she came in and she sat down and had a nice big glass of red wine. And I'm convinced that red wine will make you have a happy birthday.
Okay.
It'll live a long time.
And we have no other business?
If I may, I would like your mind, not just commissioners, but the general public, if you come to the December third meeting, it will be at the extension office due to court that day.
Okay.
Regular time.
Correct, at ten a.m.
Okay, ten a.m. at the county extension. Okay, have no other business, we will adjourn. A motion, a motion. Okay.
And we'll all second.
And we'll all second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.